I'll now call this regular city council meeting to order. You would all rise for the moment of silence and remain standing for a pledge of allegiance that will be led by council member McPartland. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Avino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, council. I've been asked by the city manager to add two items to the agenda this evening. I would like to add Resolution R-19-08 as item C under public hearings. Is that what you'd like that?
New business.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to go to new business, and we're going to go item C on Resolution R-19-08. Any objections? No. And then I would like to add discussion on the fireworks as item D under new business. Are there any other modifications to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, which one was the first one under?
We're going to do the Resolution R-19-08 as item C. Anything else, council? All right, thank you. That leaves us up to proclamations, awards, and brief announcements. I have a few this evening, and I will go down to the floor for that. We got an old man softball league here? Come on up. Everyone, come on up.
Well, actually, we didn't bring all 88 notes.
Well, that's your thing, but since there's so few, y'all can come on up and hang out. How you doing?
Good, everybody.
How you guys doing tonight?
Very good.
How you doing?
Thank you.
It's great to have you guys up here tonight. All right. How are you?
Thanks for having me.
See you again.
Absolutely.
Right on right. And there we go. All right, y'all can stand back over here. Who's going to represent you?
Mommy's doing it. I'm glad you could do a lot more than actually.
This evening, we have a proclamation to recognize the Sebastian Old Boys Softball League. Whereas the Sebastian Old Boys Softball League has been playing softball at the Barber Street Sports Complex for over 30 years, which is a great way to exercise and make new friends. And whereas the 50-year-old and older league plays year-round on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at the Barber Street Sports Complex. And whereas their annual membership fee covers equipment, pizza parties, Sebastian River Area Little League sponsorships, and toy drives. And whereas for the past decade, at Christmas time, they have faithfully donated tons of toys to the Equi Medical Council for needy children in our community. Due their generosity, many local children have experienced the true meaning of Christmas. Thank you so much for that. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, and on behalf of the entire Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim our greatest appreciation to the Sebastian Old Boys Softball League for their continuous generosity for brightening children's lives and making our community a special place to grow and live up. Thank you.
I would just like to thank the mayor and the city council, and of course, the Equi Medical Council that we've been working with for, like you said, I think it's been at least 10 years. Our organization has probably been around for at least 25, maybe more. Bob Malone could attest to that, one of our original members down there. I've only been with them for maybe 12 years, but they've been doing this for quite some time, and we always look forward every year to our toy drive, just, you know, for the kids, you know? That's what it's all about, to bring smiles to the children here, the less fortunate in our cities. So, and without all these members, we couldn't do it. And as I said, we have, I think it's 88 members now, a lot, some are snowbirds, but most of them are, like, all these guys are year-round residents here in Sebastian. So, again, we'd like to thank you and joy to doing this.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you. You know, in April, I may be able to join your league. Although you wouldn't want me on it, I can assure you of that.
You haven't seen him play yet. Jasmine Romano. Hello, how are you? Very nice to meet you. How are you this evening?
Very good.
Indeed. This evening, we also have a proclamation called "Not a Lab Rat Kick Butts Day," March 20th, 2019. Whereas in Indian River County, the percentage of youth 11 to 17 who regularly use some form of tobacco increased from 17.4% to 22.3% in 2018. Whereas the FDA recognizes electronic cigarettes as tobacco products, and the tobacco industry, including electronic cigarettes companies, target youth with flavors that appeal to children. And whereas many electronic cigarettes contain highly addictive nicotine and dangerous chemicals, and their use has been declared a public epidemic by the U.S. Surgeon General. And whereas the students working against tobacco youth of Indian River County declare, "We are not lab rats" because of the efforts of electronic cigarettes on the body, of the effects of electronic cigarettes on the body are unknown. And QuikDoc and the Tobacco Free Partnership of Indian River County encourages everyone to identify the tobacco industry's efforts to target youth and to make them replacement customers with electronic cigarettes. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, and on behalf of the entire Sebastian City Council proclaim March 20th, 2019 as Kick Butts Day 2019, and urge citizens to oppose the marketing of tobacco products to children by the tobacco industry.
Thank you so much. So, I'm just going to say some facts about e-cigarette and stuff like that. So, did you know that e-cigarettes are not harmless? Studies have shown that some aerosols contain probable cancer-causing chemicals. E-cigarette, e-cigarette, sorry, use among youth has been declared a public health epidemic. Some e-cigarettes are made by big tobacco. The same companies that lied about the harmful effects of smoking for decades are now invested in e-cigarette companies like Juul.
Ms. Carlisle?
Thank you to the mayor and to the city council for this proclamation. We are very honored to have Ms. Jasmine Romano here. She's from Oslo Middle School, and she's part of the SWAT club there. And thank you so much.
Great job. Very good job. It was a pleasure to meet you, Mrs. [inaudible]. Glad to take that. Second Vice Commander Rick Felton. I know I messed that up, didn't I? Come on up. You guys want to come up and join?
Sure.
Come on. You guys, you men and women, sorry. Couldn't forget the women. How you guys doing? This is a proclamation recognizing the 100th birthday of the American Legion. Whereas the American Legion was founded in March 1919 in Paris, France, by World War I military personnel stationed there. Those fonders were dedicated to service for veterans, military personnel, youth, and patriotic values. And whereas currently, national membership is over 2 million, we have our 700, I'm sorry, over 700 members in the City of Sebastian. Very proud of that. Thank you for that. These members sponsor many youth programs, which include scholarships, citizenship, and state government. They also provide food, clothing, medical transportation, and memorial services for our veterans. And whereas their continued work has helped veterans, Sebastian residents, youth, and our entire community. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, on behalf of the city council, express our gratitude to the American Legion and encourage citizens to join in celebration of their 100th anniversary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. On behalf of the entire American Legion family, our auxiliary, our sons of the American Legion, and our writers, I'd like to thank the citizens of Sebastian for helping us to support our veterans, and we hope to keep it going. The post here in town has been established since 1946, and we'll keep it going for our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you all so much. If you ever go to an event in Sebastian, I tell you, you can't miss, you can't miss these guys. They're always out there helping out and making these events special. So, very much appreciated, appreciate being a citizen of Sebastian because of what you do. Ben Troutman. How you doing, sir?
Good.
Last but not least, on the old proclamations tonight.
Absolutely.
Good to meet you. This is a proclamation for the American Red Cross Month, which is March 2019. Whereas more than 137 years ago, the American Red Cross was established as a humanitarian organization guided by seven fundamental principles, including humanity, impartiality, and independence, to provide services to those in need regardless of race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or citizenship status. And whereas during the past year, the Heartland Chapter, which includes Indian River County, has assisted with 113 local disasters, handled emergency military calls, and helped save lives through the Home Fire Campaign. Since October 2014, more than 2,900 smoke alarms have been installed to make households safer. Whereas the month of March is designated to recognize and thank the volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help members of our community. The City of Sebastian is truly grateful to these treasured heroes. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2019 as American Red Cross Month, and I encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. I really do appreciate this. My name is Ben Troutman. I'm a volunteer with the Red Cross. I'm the community volunteer lead, and when we do have a hurricane, which we're not going to, I am your elected official liaison as well, so I'll be your point of contact for all things Red Cross. Month of March is a great month for the Red Cross. We're doing a lot of really good projects, like the mayor just said, with the home installation, the fire, smoke alarm home installation is an incredible project that's happening. We go out, our volunteers go out into the community, and they install smoke alarms for free and give a little bit of training to the, a little fire safety training to the residents, and that saves lives as soon as they do it, which is awesome. We also are on-call 24/7 to respond to the house fires, to provide needs to them. We're also around the clock, our counselors are available to assist with veterans and active duty and their needs, as well, of course, the preparations that we do for the upcoming season. But we really do appreciate this. We appreciate your support. We appreciate your, excuse me, your participation with us, and we look forward to a very quiet next couple months.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, of course. Thank you. Isn't it wonderful that the City of Sebastian has such wonderful organizations, that we had four of them in here tonight, that are focused on making this a greater community? And it's because of organizations such as those that it's such a special place to live. Mr. Carlisle, you have a presentation for us this evening on the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Well, Mr. Kilgore has our auditors here to do the cap or Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to you all for submittal, and we'll ask him to come up and hear you.
There he is. How we doing? Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, thank you all. My name is Ross Kaufman. I'm the principal for Raymond here in Vero Beach is where our office is, and we're happy to be a part of the City of Sebastian and hopefully keep the good spirit alive here with our office report, which is really all good news. You know, I wanted to point out that what you have in front of you is what's called a comprehensive annual financial report. It's just that, it's about 180 or 150 pages long, a lot of information contained in that. The one thing that I want to point out is that, you know, through the city's commitment and your Director of Administrative Services, you guys do prepare a comprehensive annual financial report, and that's a voluntary commitment that you make to make sure that you're giving the highest level of transparent financial information to your citizens. You start off with what's called basic financial statements. That's usually what the majority of the cities and municipalities prepare, and then you have a comprehensive financial statements. And in fact, then, when you prepare these statements, you're eligible to submit them for, to the Government Finance Officers Association for a certificate of achievement and excellence. These financial statements are submitted to that organization, they review them, they make sure they meet that level of reporting, and if they do, you're issued a certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Just to let you know how rare that is, there's about 89,000 governmental entities in the United States, less than 4% of them receive the certificate of excellence in financial reporting, about 4,300 entities throughout the United States. So, you're one of those 43 entities that received a certificate. You received it last year, that copy of that certificate's in this financial report, and certainly expect that you'll receive it for these reports as well. So, what's contained in here and what makes it a comprehensive is because you have four sections. You have the introductory section, which has a letter of transmittal, and then the certificate. You have the financial section, which contains our report, which is the highest level of assurance we can give you, an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give you on the financial statements. The financial statements, the notes, and then what's called required supplemental information. You have a statistical section, and I always point out in that area back there, there's 10-year trend analysis back there that's, I think, very meaningful for the citizens and for the city to be able to see trends in financial trends, revenue capabilities, debt, and then also demographic and economic items as well. And then the last is a compliance section that's contained inside of that. I always offer, I'm happy to sit down to go through the financial statements. They're quite comprehensive, as we say, and, but I wanted to just give you the general overview of what's all contained in those financial statements. In addition, this year, you were subject to what's called a single audit. That's a separate report that you received, a little smaller, about 10 pages long instead of 150 pages. And as you might know, gosh, 30, 40 years ago, the federal government really pushed a mandate down to local governmental entities and said that if you receive federal funding and if you receive over a certain threshold, we're going to require that municipality or that entity to undertake a single audit. And the single audit is not a financial audit per se, it's more of a compliance, compliance audit. That threshold is if you have expenditures of more than $750,000 in a particular year, you're required to have the federal single audit. By the way, the states all kind of jumped on this and said, "Well, we're going to push that mandate down to the local entity, make them pay for the audit to make sure that they're in compliance with the various grant agreements." Last year, you crossed the threshold from a state standpoint and had a state single audit. This year, you have a federal single audit. So, that's why you have this separate report. It was primarily the airport improvement out there with the taxiway and the runways. You spent about $1.9 million on those projects. And the report that we issued there as well, that we go through all these compliance issues, we of course have to read, understand the grant, and then make sure that all the money was expended for allowable cost. If there's anything there that would have to be reported, we would let you know, there's nothing there to be reported. There also are several other compliance areas, just to make you aware. There's cash management, real property management, since that's, you know, the airport, obviously. The one that's always sort of interesting is revenue diversion testing, which just means that because it was part of the airport fund, that the funds going into the airport are being used for airport purposes. So, we had to test that as well. You're required to file reports with the FAA. We tested those to make sure that you're in compliance with that. And then this grant as well required a matching component. The federal government put up 90%, and then the city put up five, and then you were able to get five from the state as well. So, that's why you have two reports this year, the comprehensive annual financial report and then the single audit. So, throughout them all, there's really nothing there that would alarm us. You're in compliance, you've fulfilled all of your obligations, the internal controls that you have are adequate, are more than adequate for this size government. We didn't find any material weaknesses to report to you, and that's contained in our report as well. So, that's just a quick overview I wanted to give you. If you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but also, as I always offer, I'm happy to meet with you individually if there's, you know, specific questions that you have within the financial statements themselves.
That's great. So, you're saying that we're in good shape, right?
Yes.
And so, I would ask that the City of Sebastian has decided to take an extra step in providing the information and delineating where things are spent. You said there's a simple, and then what we do is more advanced in our efforts?
Yeah, again, the report itself, just the nature, the comprehensive, vast majority of municipalities report what they could just call a basic financial statement. Yours has a high, a much higher level of reporting.
Right.
A much higher level of disclosure, summary of information, that's that transmittal, the management discussion analysis. So, there's a lot of good information in there for the citizens.
So, this would provide additional transparency in our financials to the public, which is above and beyond, what do you say, 96% of the other governmental agencies?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, the comprehensive, you've been doing it for so long, it seems like it's probably normal. At the point I was trying to make it, it's not normal. It's, you're really an elite that chooses to report at this level, and then not only report at that level, but also apply for the certificate of excellence in financial reporting through the Government Finance Officers Association, which you receive that certificate as well. So, yes, it's a, it's a, it's several extra steps above what would be just a normal reporting requirement.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council?
I have none.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you all.
Congratulations, staff, on, once again, doing an outstanding, above-average, by far, job for the City of Sebastian.
I have an excellent staff. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, brief announcements?
Hi. Brief announcements. March 15th through 17th is the Shrimp Fest and Craft Brew Hula-Bloo at Riverview Park. Friday from 3:00 to 9:00, Saturday from 10:00 to 9:00, and Sunday from 10:00 to 5:00. March 22nd is a chamber concert in the park. The band is Soul Jam. That's from 5:30 to 8:00. And March 23rd, the Sebastian River Art Club show is in Riverview Park from 10:00 to 4:00.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any additional announcements you'd like to make at this time? All right, seeing that, we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move approval, item A through D.
Say it. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item A, we don't have any appointments to make this evening. Does anyone have any committee reports they would like to make? All right, seeing that, we'll move on to public hearings. Tonight, we have a second reading and public hearing on ordinance number O-19-01. And we'll now open that hearing. Mr. Stokes?
An ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, amending land development code, Article 22, language and definitions, amending Section 54-5-22.3(c) regarding adult personal service businesses, providing for severability and repeal of laws in conflict, providing for codification, providing for squibberner's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the second reading. To bring people up to date on what we've done, there was an individual that came to the city council because our code would not allow for this type of service, which happens to be, his business was tattoo parlors. And so, council directed staff to come up with an idea of how to look at that and amend it to see how we could take that out of the industrial area and make it a business. And so, staff, and I give Dory a lot of credit, she went through and determined that just changing a definition would make that happen, but in doing that, it's still required a change in the ordinance, and you all approved ordinance on the first reading. The second public hearing and the second reading of this ordinance would make this, would put this into place. And with that, I'll open it. Ms. Bosworth, if you had any additional questions?
All right, very good. We'll go to public input this time. Is there anyone from the public who should speak on ordinance O-19-1? Yes, ma'am, in the back first, in the back first. Do you have to come forward to the mic, please? Yes. Ma'am, you have to come to the mic so we can get, record it, please? And then if you could just state your name and where you live. Thank you very much.
Lisa Rodriguez. I live in Sebastian, Florida. I have owned a tattoo business in this town for the past 12 years. It was very difficult, and I had to get a variance, and I was stuck in a warehouse, which has ended up being a beautiful blessing because I do fundraisers and many different things from there. It's not only a tattoo studio, it is an art gallery. I also teach art therapy from there, and I have, through these years, I used to work in South Florida. I've been tattooing for 30 years, and I came up here to help my mother pass, and I fell in love with this town, and they allowed me to have a variance in the industrial area. It's been very difficult. We're not allowed a marquee or anything else like that, but I'm still so grateful because I have been able to tattoo all of my clients to the point where their children have gotten tattooed by me now. So, it is a beautiful family business, and I just wanted to step forward and say that, yes, it's a great variance that you guys are going to allow this to happen, but I just wanted to be remembered in the process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully, this will help you, if you need to, to move into something that will be a little bit more, provide you more public access.
I wanted to keep my space because, for some reason, it was meant to be that way.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
But I would like you guys to discuss marquees on Fight 12.
Yeah, maybe we'll have that discussion when I'm getting a tattoo.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I need to state my name?
Yes, indeed.
William Buck. I live in Sebastian as well. I just wanted to come and say thank you, guys, for, you know, I came here with an issue. This was clearly made a priority. It wasn't something that was dragged on, and like she, like Lisa stated, she has had a business here, and I didn't just do this for me. It was, it was for my career, obviously, my family, but for my industry as well. It was definitely looked at and regulated a completely different way. So, I think for my career and everyone else moving forward, I think this is a great step for Sebastian, and I just want to say from myself and from my family, thank you, and I'm really happy that you guys made this a priority and that we are able to move out of, you know, Lisa's happy where she's at. My vision is different, as well as everyone here. So, I am just very thankful that you guys allowed this to move forward and made changes to this.
Great. Thank you very much, and, you know, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, so. Anyone else from the public who should speak on ordinance O-19-01? All right, hearing done. Ms. Bosworth, would you like to sum this up?
I just wanted to verify from the first reading and second reading, there hasn't been any changes to the ordinance, and staff recommends approval.
All right, very good. I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure?
I move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and I appreciate you guys coming up this evening. Item B, second reading and public hearing of ordinance number O-19-03, City of Sebastian, code amendment with regards to employee travel. Mr. Carlisle?
Let me read it first. An ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, repealing code of ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-75A and Section 2-74B regarding meal allowance and per diem, providing for codification, providing for squibberner's errors, providing for conflict, providing for severability of provisions, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carlisle?
Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading, again, of an ordinance the board previously has approved, this on the first reading. This repeals two sections of the ordinance, and later, there's a resolution that'll put in place the new policies. What this does is allow us to follow state statute on per diems and travel and follow the state or the IRS for mileage reimbursements. It makes us consistent with state law, it makes it consistent with what the IRS allows for, and we hope that the city council would consider this repealing of these two provisions, 2.75A and 274B in this ordinance.
All right, thank you. Is anyone from the public who should speak on O-19-03? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Council, what's your pleasure?
Move approval of ordinance O-19-03.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, great. No one finished business this evening. It's now time for public input. Is anyone from the public who should speak on an issue that's not currently on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Karen Rutledge, and I live over in Point of Woods. And since January of 2018, there has been significant aircraft that have been using our airport, flight schools mostly. Given the recent events this year with regards to airplanes, and most recently, the death of a foreign female student pilot on March 5th, I have two concerns. One is noise and nuisances, and the second is safety. Regarding noise and nuisances, myself along with residents of bordering communities have become very upset with the increased noise pollution this airport allows. I have spoken with Scott Baker via phone, email, and text messages. In July of 2018, Scott and I arranged a meeting for August 2nd. I was told all were welcome, but when I asked about the ability to teleconference, for those who could not attend with physical handicaps, I was told that there was no teleconference ability and that this was not a public meeting. I was told that this was a briefing for invited Point of Woods homeowners. Yet, at this meeting, there were people there that weren't residents of Point of Woods. Anyway, in a follow-up meeting that occurred on September 17th, the long and short of it is that we were given the same talking points with no desire to act on our behalf to get answers to the questions or concerns. I have recorded observations, lots of them, times, photos, videos, to document the bombardment of planes. The time of day varies, can start as early as just before 7:00 a.m. as all the way to midnight. I have learned that the majority of offenders are from flight schools from Vero Beach, Flight Safety International, and Paris Air, with about 85% of their student pilots being foreign. Having read the Airport Master Plan, all over 400 pages of it, it is very well-known that we are the, that they are the majority of the occurrences at our airport. They account for about 80%. Efforts to approach Flight Safety and Paris Air by Scott Baker was much appreciated after our first meeting. But often, the recommended, excuse me, guidelines were agreed to by Flight Safety but are often not followed. Paris Air, to my knowledge, has not had any response to the agreement. The Master Plan should reference these suggestions, except for Number 8, which is the preferred runway of runway 5, which affects me. Also, the brochure this year that was created with the heading of Be a Good Neighbor was very discriminatory, and I can't believe that anybody in the council would have approved it. This was discussed in our meeting in September, and I was told that it would be done away with. Don't know if that's happened yet. And then, lastly, with regards to safety, the Code of Federal Regulations Title 14, Chapter 1, Subchapter E, Part 77 references in the Master Plan under Airport Imaginary Services states that services are, surfaces are to be used by the airport sponsor to prevent any possible hazard to the airspace surrounding the airport. On page 45, excuse me, page 4-45, it states, "A three-story house is located within the approach of runway 5." That is my home. So, I think that I'm a good reference with regards to unsafe observations. Certain assurances must be met by the FAA. And on page 6 of the Airport Sponsor Assurances, Number 9, states, "Public hearings." Given that I am on record with my concerns, held meetings to express my concerns, and that my house is referenced in the Master Plan, how is it that I was not informed or asked to give input or express concern to make sure that these requirements were met? How can the new Master Plan be authorized in this case? Given the recent events, I've got a stack of them here, and the loss of life that we experienced recently, safety is paramount, I ask this council to strongly act on behalf of the residents with this, on behalf of the residents, with strongly facilitating the guidelines that were initially agreed to upon by the flight schools. Student pilots should not be able to operate over residential areas on approach and takeoff such as these touch-and-goes, and there's lots of them, especially given that we don't have an air traffic control tower at our airport. I fear my home and family will suffer a loss at the hands of a student pilot, and God help us if that happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bob Stevens, I live at 150 Concha Drive. Try to keep this short so I can breathe through it. Last Friday, the herbicide boat came by my house and did their job. My wife and I are getting really sick on this stuff. I know we should move, but I can't afford to get out of here. I witnessed and videoed this man spraying the walkway from Joy Haven to the Stormwater Park. They hadn't been spraying the walkway before. People with dogs and kids walk that walkway to the park for exercise, and you're not telling them that they've got poison on their shoes, and on the feet of the dogs, and the kids that are on their knees. Listen, McPartlin, you're supposed to be for the kids. You're not telling them that you're poisoning their walkway.
Sir, when you're speaking from the public, you're to direct your comments to the chair.
Sorry.
And that would be me. Thank you.
So, you ought to be warning these people that you're spraying. It's in the permit. I know you've jumped the permit somehow or another, but it is in the permit to tell people that you're spraying poisons. You know, I don't need to tell you what countries and counties and cities have stopped using these bad chemicals, you know? I'm just getting sick on this, you guys. It's making me sick, you know?
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Vice Mayor. I thank you for letting me speak. Bob is my fashion model, if you hadn't noticed that. Four things I want to say to you. First, I want to thank Mr. Carlyle, the city manager, for appearing in the Lake Okeechobee for the Fish and Wildlife Commission discussion of the glyphosate herbicide hearings that they had statewide. And I know it's an educational experience, where you go to these things to find out just what the concerns are for the use of the herbicides. I'm going to ask you to take what Bob Stevens says very seriously, the health issues. I know it's difficult, because people are not dropping dead with this thing, but I'd like you to take it, take him as seriously about health issues as you took as seriously the young lady who was here talking about smoking and the problems of EVAP stuff. I'm going to implore you to get ahead of the curve and deal with the herbicide spraying, as Mr. Stevens has said, and set an example to our neighboring communities to take a serious look about better ways to do this. And if we have to use it in certain circumstances, fine, but willingly spray it as they do is just, just unacceptable. If you'll notice, and I know you've all read this from cover to cover, the Indian River Lagoon Council CCMP book lists herbicides and pesticides as contaminants of emerging concern, and I just want you to pay attention to the fact that it is emerging concern, and it will not go away. And so, we wish you would just bend a little and talk to us about what we can do as an alternative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public who should speak on any item not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, council and mayor, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to introduce myself, offer some help, and I have one question for you. My name is Diana Bolton. I live at George Street, about one lot over from the Stormwater, beautiful 166-acre Stormwater Park, which I was delighted to find, and it's a real bonus. I love living in this town. I am a research scientist with a degree in environmental marine science. I've worked in coral reef and seagrass restoration. I'm also 100-ton master captain, boat captain, and I've worked in the Florida Keys and for the NOAA Marine Sanctuary. In addition, I'm a rescue diver, dive master, and a research diver. I've also got a degree in business administration and military science. I've worked at water sampling for the FDEP on Charlotte Harbor Marine Estuary Project, where there's hundreds of miles of shoreline, and that has been experiencing bad red tide, as you know, from the outfall of Lake Okeechobee. And it's caused a, nearly an 18-month state of emergency, and a complete mortality, death and destruction of all sea life, manatees, dolphins, and fish up to 60 miles offshore in the Gulf of Mexico. I've worked with Dr. Brian Lapointe at Harbor Ranch Oceanographic Institute, doing research diving in the Florida Keys and 10,000 islands on the west coast of Florida, collecting algae, my specialty. And he, we've worked together on fingerprinting nitrogen isotopes, which is basically forensics for tracing source pollution. So, when someone denies they polluted, you can track it back to them. I was approached and asked to provide scientific, accurate research and input for a United States presidential candidate in 2016, that was for that election, and most recently, was again approached and asked to assist in our Florida gubernatorial race, to provide accurate research and data on how to reverse our pollution and for our vulnerable state of Florida, and how to reverse some of the damage that we've caused. I work on the local, state, and federal level, advocating for our health, clean air, and water. Last year, we successfully, me and my team, worked successfully on state legislation, getting both House and Senate bills passed to help clean up some polluted water, and working on systems to help in the Lake Okeechobee problem that's affecting both east and west coast of Florida for hundreds of miles. I'm involved with captains, this is for disclosure purposes, I am involved with captains for Clean Water, Florida Keys Environmental Coalition, Save the Florida Bay, Indian River Clean Water Coalition, Citizens for Safe Science, GMO Free Florida, Sebastian Property Owners Association, Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition, Pelican Island Preservation Society, and I sit on the board of the Directors of Friends of the St. Sebastian River. I'm a sixth-generation Floridian. You met my mother and father, I introduced them to you, they were the guest of honor this weekend at the Pelican Island, Wayne and Shirley Kragel. I attended the historic school right here, elementary school, and I graduated from Vero Beach High. At that school is where I read Silence Spring, and it made a big impact on me, Rachel Carlson, and what's happening with the environment and how things are all connected.
I don't mean to interrupt, ma'am, you have about, about a minute left.
Yes, sir.
You have about one minute left.
Say again?
About one minute left.
Oh, okay, all right. I lived in Europe, three different countries, and during that time, my heart was still in Sebastian, and I wrote articles for the Sebastian Sun Newspaper. Prior to that, I, I put myself through college by working in landscaping and working with pesticides, fertilizers, and golf courses. I want you to know that you're welcome to contact me in regards to my research and environmental toxins in our community, and I'm at your service. I plan to meet with each of you individually in the near future, and this is our chance to improve our quality of life here in Sebastian, Florida. Right now, the main concern are the glyphosate and herbicide and pesticide issues, which are now linked, and I will provide more science as the time comes, 15 illnesses, non-Hodgkin's, lymphoma, kidney disease, liver cancer, respiratory illnesses, Alzheimer's, neural cell death, birth defects, autism, brain cancer, breast cancer. Cancer rates are two to four times higher for people that are exposed to Roundup and glyphosate and all the other chemicals that are associated. Celiac disease, colitis, diabetes, heart disease, Lou Gehrig's disease, multiple sclerosis, Parkinson's disease, and obesity.
We need to wrap it up, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. I am available for questions, and if you have any, if I can help in any way on any of your environmental concerns, or ways that we can push forward on this, to get this approved as far as more responsible practices, and we can follow the lead of the City of Miami
Thank you.
And Hollendale, and Miami, North Miami Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening wish to speak on any issue not on the agenda? All right, there was one issue that was brought up, I'm going to close the, the public input section of the meeting. There was one issue that was brought up on the airport. Is there any, any way we can get sort of a brief definition or synopsis on how we can, we're involved in flight plans and touch-and-goes, and what controls we have relative to the traffic that we have at our airport?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we, and we have reached out to FAA with their concerns, and even some of their suggestions, the resident suggestions, and FAA said, absolutely not, you're not going to do it. The regulations or the, they're not regulations, they're voluntary, and Flight Safety has voluntarily put in place for their flight times. The other flight schools, FIT and Paris Air, they're not, they didn't even have any agreements or any potential flight restrictions on their, their training. FAA regulates the airspace, we do not. The City of Sebastian does not regulate the airspace. So, we can't tell pilots, you can come in and you can't come in. You know, we can't tell them, you can only fly during these hours. We don't have that, we don't have that authority. It's open to the public, and the public can use it. We understand that there is substantial flight safety training. It's because there's a flight safety or pilot shortage. It's a, it's a market that has a lot of participation. We don't have the ability to regulate it. We can't tell Flight Safety, you can only fly 12 planes an hour in here. We can't tell Paris Air, you can only drive, do three. No matter how, how many times we explain that, it's, you need to do something. And it's not that we don't want to, we don't have the ability to. FAA has told us, one of the suggestions was, get flight numbers and charge them for touch-and-goes. Flight Sa, or FAA said, not going to happen. They would not support that. They would take over the airport. We would lose any and all control. The airport's not going to close down. If we said, the City of Sebastian said, we'll close the airport, FAA will come in and take it over, and we would have no, no say at all what goes on there. So, it, it is unfortunate. The runway, the airport's been there since '47. Any houses built around there were built after the airport, and that's unfortunate. And the facts are, those airplanes are going to come. And we've taken away the preferred airline, which put it over that resident's home. They can come in any way they want to, although they do the prevailing winds. So, prevailing winds and pilot safety takes precedence over which runway they use and don't use. We give them preferred runway at the time because that was the way the prevailing winds were. So, the pilots that are flying the plane, it's their ultimate safety to come in. They have a regulated glide path, but there's no way to regulate that and say, you came in 50 feet too low, or you came in 50 feet too high. It's pilot's safety. It's the pilot determines his safe glide path based on the wind and the weather conditions. So, you could take a picture from the ground and say, that plane's 50 feet above my house. Where her house is, it's 150 feet is about where the clearance is. That's about half the height of a cell tower. So, that looks really close. And so, I, you know, again, we don't have the ability to regulate it. Contrary to how much you, someone wants to jump up and down, we can't regulate.
The bottom line is that we don't own the airport. The federal government basically owns the airport. But we are allowed to utilize much of the airport to generate economic development, lease our golf course from the airport. So, we do have a responsibility as a city, however, to do our best to try to make the quality of life and the safety of our citizens a high priority in those areas, and we have been for years, making those attempts.
Yes, and I know that Mr. Baker has met numerous times with Flight Safety and with Paris Air, and asked them to try to comply with their voluntary flight restrictions, time restrictions, and the number of planes in the pattern based on skydivers. But even the skydive numbers have gone dramatically higher. I've seen more skydivers out there this year than I did six months ago. So, I mean, even the skydiving operation has, has been, been a lot, a lot better. And we've... the skydiving operation has been, been a lot, a lot better, and we've, and I don't anticipate that getting any slower with the coverage that we've had over the events we've had out there. I don't see that going away or reducing either.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to reference the conversation that the last young lady had. I'd like to recommend Mr. Carlisle. He and I have had, Mr. Carlisle and I have had many conversations about this, and I know he's grappling with this whole herbicide thing as much as everybody else is and trying to look at alternatives and so forth. Maybe the two of you can get together. I think that's a better avenue than trying to meet individually with the council members because there's got to be something that flows through the staff, so maybe the two of you can get together and have a conversation about what she might do to help.
Absolutely. I was just going to reach out after her meeting and then see if there's time for us to get together and talk about a lot of different issues, water quality and all those issues. I think she brings a lot to the table.
All right. Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Lead item 12, new business. Item 12, approved contract with Nitty Sports Construction for Schuman Court Tennis Court Resurfacing. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things we've had in the budget is to redo the tennis courts out at Schuman Park, and Nitty Sports is also the people that are building the pickleball, pickleball courts for us, and they, under that national contract, we're going to piggyback that to provide an opportunity for them to redo the pickleball courts as well, I mean, the pickleball tennis courts as well out at Schuman Park.
Go ahead.
And so we think that this is a fair, a fair price based on the national contract, and we'd like to move forward with that in conjunction with the pickleball construction.
And they're going to do that in a same mobilization type of situation? They're just going to move over, so is it going to be done at the same time, or are they going to come in and?
They're probably going to start Schuman Park early. The one thing we're working out with them, once we get this contract signed, is just the logistics, if we can do half of them at one time and do another half, because they have to be shut down for a period of time.
Okay.
Mr. Benton's here, and he's worked very hard on getting this put together, and he can answer some particular questions if you have them.
Great. Counsel, what's your pleasure on item A?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item A under new business? All right. Hearing none, council, any questions to staff? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Evino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work on this issue. Next item, item B, resolution of R-19-04. Mr. Stokes?
Resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, updating the travel policy for city council. Providing for conflict, providing for疏离, providing for疏离.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, this resolution is the follow-up to the ordinance that you just passed, and it sets the travel policy and the guidelines for travel, for our per diems, and keeps us in compliance with state statute.
All right. Thank you, counsel. What's your pleasure on resolution R-1904?
Move approval of R-1904.
Second.
Motion second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item B under new business tonight? Any further discussion from council or questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Evino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes, and I'd like to thank staff for bringing this forward. Next item, item D, another new agenda item. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, we just recently, I think Monday, received a notice from the court that our current fireworks company has filed Chapter 11 bankruptcy, and Mr. Benton has been working hard on getting a new company, and it's not easy when it's late in the game, and so we asked that the board would consider waiving the purchasing policy. This company, Extreme FX LLC, has contracts that we can piggyback, but we don't have time to get on the schedule. With this company filing bankruptcy, all of those individuals are going to be trying to find another fireworks company, and I give Mr. Benton credit. He pounded bushes to get this person, but I can tell you that in the end, it's actually going to be better because, if I will, just for a minute, the one and a half, one to two and a half inch shells was 246 with Creative, it's 2,000 with Extreme, and the numbers are just far greater, number of fireworks we're to get for the same 25,000 we got before. They've, we've done some research, he's called the references, and I think we'll have a good show, but if we don't get it done now, we probably won't have a show, so it's important that we try to get this going.
You know, and a good show is very important. You know, we have, we have an amazing patriotic event down on the Fourth of July in Sebastian. You've all been there. Most of the people in the city go to these events, and it's, it's such an amazing event to see thousands of people down there in boats and along our shores. The, really, the crescendo is incredibly important. Last year was about 35 seconds long because the storm was coming in, and they just basically had a quick.
Just put it up and get it out.
They said, light those suckers up. Real quick question on this. Are you sure we can't just take the truck up to Alabama with 25,000 and just load it up?
South Carolina, south of the border.
South Carolina is good.
South Carolina is good. We discussed that. Our concern was that a fire marshal might not allow us.
Oh, there we go. All right.
Where's George Bonacci?
Counsel, what's your pleasure on new item D?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? The only thing I would say is, and I'm not a big spender of money, but you know, we've been spending 25,000 on a fireworks show for 20 years, so I just want to make sure that if there's a need to figure out a way, even if it's through a public partner, public-private partnership or something like that, we want to make sure that show is spectacular because Sebastian is special on the Fourth of July, special every day, but that's an incredibly special day for us. We want to make sure that we're providing the people, the thousands and thousands of people that come here specifically for that, the best show that we can provide them. So we may want to consider going forward, making sure we can do that in the budgeting process. Anything else? Hearing nothing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Evino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Stokes, can you dazzle us this evening?
I.
No.
I don't have fireworks. That's what we're talking about. Update on fireworks, on the, okay. I was going to have nothing, but the manager's, you know, nudging me here to just give you an update on the fire marshal, the fire inspector plan. We have notified the county, the county commission, as I'm sure you know, did pass. Now, it was three to two, but they did pass the proposal to withdraw the dispute resolution process. That kicked it back into our court. We confirmed with them that at the last meeting that there was consensus to accept that and to go into the negotiation process. Actually, about a half hour before this meeting, I received an email from the county attorney, Dylan Ryan-Gold, with the first draft of the inter-local agreement. I will be forwarding it, and Mr. Carlisle and I will dig into it starting tomorrow and take a look at what they've sent us. Supposed to be pretty close to what they had proposed to Felsmere in the past, which was never executed, but we'll start taking a look at that and get into that and be able to report back to you soon. Since we are not going to be meeting again in March, we will communicate with you individually to keep you posted, but we'll give you a public update at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carlisle?
Just a couple things, one thing. I did the Meals on Wheels tour today, and if you haven't done it, I can tell you that the service they provide to those residents and the way they react when you bring them the food, I was talking to some of those residents, and it's, some of them, from what they're telling me, it's the only meal they get, and they were just excited to get it. I think they're as much as excited to get the food as they are to get the camaraderie. So if anybody has an opportunity to volunteer for a couple hours to do food deliveries for the Meals on Wheels, I highly recommend it. I think our community in this county stands out. I mean, it's unbelievable the number of meals that they put out. It's, it was, it was really touching. This community really comes together, and I think that speaks highly of us.
Great. Thank you.
As a community. And I'll be tending the Strump Fest on this weekend. Looking forward to it.
All right. We'll see you up there. Ms. Williams? All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Dodd?
Nothing.
Mr. Evino?
Wow, you said it right. That was good.
Is that correct? Yes, it was. I've been working every day on that because I want to make you happy. But I thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. The young lady that spoke about the pesticides, I'm sorry, your first name again?
Diana Bolton.
Diana. I actually would like to get your information and sit down and meet with you and talk about it. I have a background in the medical field, which involves chemistry and some organic chemistry and stuff, and I'd really love to get up to speed on, your resume is very, very impressive, and I'd like to hear what you have to say. So if you could take care of that for me, that would be great. I'd love to talk with her. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember McPartland?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing more here. Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yeah, I was very impressed with Diana's talk as well, and I kind of like to recommend that we suspend spraying next month until the city manager and Diana have a chance to get together and talk and see if there's anything else we can put in those canals, just for one month.
I think that there's already been a dramatic cutback, and we're only spraying evasives right now, and we're spot spraying, and I've also seen pictures of the spraying that took place behind Mr. Stevens' house from the perspective of the park, because we actually recorded that also from the park side, and it was very spot spraying, and they're only, they're only spraying evasives, and they're only doing very spot spraying right now. In fact, in the canal behind my house, the green stuff is growing up to the top of the canal wall, but that's because it's non-evasives that are growing there, and they haven't been spraying those. So there has been an attempt to cut back on the spraying that's taking place and only dealing with the non-evasive, with the invasive plants. The city manager and I had a conversation Monday about the possibility of he finding from our spraying company, if there was a non-chemical-based or a non-pollutant-based that we can use to kill the non-evasives before they fall into the water and create more muck in the bottom that the nitrogen grows from, and he's committed to me that he would work with them and try to come up with some, there's, I've seen great articles about salt-based solutions and things like that that will kill them, won't kill the roots, but it'll kill the foliage, and so there is some work being done in the backside of this. It's not like nobody's thinking about it or talking about it. I've had conversations with city manager, and we have every bit of the empathy in the world with Mr. Stevens, but you just can't knee-jerk react to things unless you look at them from a systemic perspective, and that's so. There are things going on. I just, I don't think that we can make a moratorium. Even the state's backed off. They made a moratorium in the last year for what, three weeks? And then Dave said, no, we're going to start spraying again. So we're not going to solve this problem in 30 days. If we're going to quit spraying until we solve the problem, we just quit spraying, you know, because I don't think we're going to solve the problem that quick, but we do. There is an attempt underway right now to try to come up with solutions, and the more help we can get from people with the background like that, the better off we're going to be, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I agree. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Being known for the business, we are adjourned.